Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 4:00 p.m. on this 26th day of April 2022. As always, members of the public will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. And we welcome those present with us today and hope that everybody had an enjoyable and well-deserved spring break. At 5:30, the Board will conclude its administrative, informal, and workshop session. Unless the Board votes to continue until 40, 5:45, this session will conclude no later than then to allow the Board and administration to prepare for the formal session at 6:00 p.m. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. And to, with respect to our two other colleagues, Mrs. Franklin is absent due to personal illness, and Mrs. Melnick will be tardy due to the announcement and presentation of Neptune Festival First Citizen of Virginia Beach. So that brings us to our administrative matters and reports. And I'm going to go first, just simply because of the list of what I have here. A lot of it is really for everybody's benefit to double-check that you've received certain notices. This is the time of year for lots of celebrating. And I'd like to make a point of noting that the month of May brings, we have three school dedications planned. So for any, and the clerk is working on posting these dates on our School Board calendar on the SharePoint site. But if you want to make a note, at the moment, we have May 17 Princess Anne. These are all morning in-person. May 29 Thoroughgood. May 12, that was not chronological order, but the Brock Classroom Dedication. And if any of you want this, or are missing the original email or want to know when it was sent, you know, just reach out to me personally afterwards, and I'll be happy to resend those to you. May 6 is the Teacher of the Year Celebration, which is in-person at the Hilton. And a friendly reminder that we've been asked to get our, we've been asked to get our RSVPs in by the end of this week, I believe. But May 6 is a Friday, and some have also stepped up to sponsor a teacher. But all School Board members are invited. So again, if you don't have a record of receipt of that invitation, please do reach out to me for that as well. It is, you know, obviously a very special event, and the first in-person one in quite a while. There was a Brickle Scholars Notice that just went out, and that will be virtual because that was the plan, and probably it was too last minute for them to make any adjustments. That's May 19 at 4:30, so it is virtual. So again, I'm happy to share that email if you need that. Let's see. And as I've noted previously, and with respect to the upcoming superintendent evaluation process, May 1 is the day, the target day to send to you all the instrument, just so that you'll have some time to refresh your memories and start getting your thoughts together. So that obviously is this week. So I'll be in touch with Mrs. Lanetti, and we will make that happen. Sticking with legal for a moment, we, the process is continuing for the establishment of the Legal Department effective July 1. And just wanted to communicate that the outside counsel, our outside counsel is in touch with Mrs. Lanetti and hers, and there'll be more information forthcoming about that. So we're being very diligent here about being sure we will meet that timeline. And the, as is typical in the past, I joined Dr. Spence and Ms. Pate, our Chief Financial Officer, and Mr., our Chief of Operations, Mr. Freeman. I joined them for a presentation to City Council on all your behalf on April 19. And that's recorded, if you wish to view it. And as a side note, School Board leadership staff, along with the Superintendent Ms. Pate, are working on a meeting, a combined meeting with our City Council counterparts to discuss some developments with respect to revenue sharing revenues, some additional revenues. So we are proceeding to make that happen. And my last notice concerns the present act of book appeal, to note that the committee has met, and the committee's in the process of drafting its recommendation to the School Board. So stay tuned on next steps, which will be determined in accordance with the governing regulation. So anybody else? All right, I'm sure we'll hear more from you all when it's committee reports time. So then I'm happy to proceed with our first formal presentation for this workshop, market study proposal. And Ms. Woodhouse, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer with the Department of Human Resources. This afternoon, we bring to you the project overview for the Division's Compensation Study. Not since 2005-2006 school year has Virginia Beach City Public Schools had a full compensation study, and it is well past time. The good news is that the recommendations from the last study were fully implemented during the 2017-2018 school year. As you know, staffing has become more challenging with the lack of available candidates and increased compensation between the public and private sector. We also hear from our employees who feel that they definitely work hard and are dedicated to the Division, but sometimes feel underpaid, that this market study will help to guide those recommendations for consideration presented by the Department of Human Resources in the December-January timeframe. So as not to delve into the presentation, I would like to introduce to you Heather Kazemi with Siegel. And please know at the conclusion of the presentation, we both will be prepared to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me. I'm going to share with you today a summary and an overview of the compensation study, which is just getting started this month. Is there, is the presentation? So this is the 2022 Compensation Study and Overview for you all. But I just did want to share very briefly, in case you're not familiar with Siegel and the firm, just a little bit of background of who we are and how we come to do this work. But Siegel was founded in 1939 and is among the top 10 compensation and benefits consulting firms in the United States. We have more than 1,000 employees and 24 offices in North America. So what this means is that for over 80 years, we've been providing trusted advice that improves lives, and we do that through helping our clients such as yourself design and evaluate compensation and benefits programs that help you attract and keep the talent that you need to serve the community. One of our areas of focus is in the public sector, and just a short list here of some of the school districts and other public entities in Virginia and across the country that, where we have done this exact same kind of work. We recently wrapped up a compensation study for the City of Virginia Beach, so we're familiar with the area and the market in which you're competing right now, as well as other school districts throughout the state, and as you see here in other states as well. So the project goals, we understand you have three goals for this study. The first is to revise and adopt the School Board's compensation philosophy. So you've met my colleague, Dr. Paula Singer, who came and worked with you last July during your retreat to begin discussions about your compensation philosophy and your strategy. And she's going to come back and meet with you again at your next retreat in July to wrap up that discussion and to finalize that document in that direction. So that information and those principles that you put in that compensation philosophy will be the foundation for everything that we do after that, including the market analysis, as well as any recommendations for any change for the school division. The second goal is to understand and evaluate the Division's competitiveness in the marketplace. That is, how competitive are your pay scales and your compensation policies for attracting and keeping and rewarding and recognizing educators, administrators, and staff? So we'll be doing that market analysis, which involves a custom survey to specific school divisions and other organizations. The third goal is to implement a compensation program that strengthens your market position, as well as facilitates internal equity, and again, the ability to successfully recruit and retain high-quality, highly qualified administrators, educators, and staff. And of course, being mindful of financial realities, developing a plan that is fiscally responsible, that is, one that you can implement and maintain for the long term. That's the goal here. So in terms of the project steps, starting with the project initiation, which as I said, starts this month, our second step is an employee communication and survey process. As you heard from Mrs. Woodhouse, that employees have been asking about compensation, and there have been questions. So we want to make sure that everyone in the workforce knows that this study is happening and what the process will be and what the timeline will be, as well as a survey to ask their opinions and their thoughts on the study itself and how that moves forward. Third, the third step is that Board Retreat that I mentioned in July, where Dr. Singer will come back and work with you to finalize that compensation philosophy. And concurrent with that, and overlapping with that, is the market assessment, which is step number four. And then lastly, recommendations and evaluating different pay plan designs, evaluating costs, and sort of an iterative process to see what the prevailing practices are, see what you do now, and look for what would be the right approach for Virginia Beach schools. So a bit about the timeline. We're starting, as I said, in April, and we anticipate concluding and coming back to you with a report of our findings and recommendations in the October-November timeframe. But in April is the project initiation, finalizing the scope of work and our contract, developing their project plan, and of course, meeting with you all to get the project started. In May is when we anticipate the employee communication and survey to kick off. We'll develop questions, analyze, distribute the survey, analyze results, and develop some frequently asked questions and provide status updates for employees as we go through the process. In June and July is when, as I said, finalizing the compensation philosophy, but also starting market data collection. We're starting in June, because as you know, many school divisions change their pay scales in July. So we want to make sure we have the freshest data possible and that we're looking at FY23 salary and compensation information. So that will get started in June and July. On August and September, so collecting that data, analyzing it, preparing a summary of results, and you know, that quality control and all those aspects that go into that kind of data collection. In October and November, as I said, is when we will be discussing potential directions for change. What are the pros and cons of different approaches to compensation, modeling different pay scale options, and estimating any costs and impact on employees? So in terms of deliverables, what will you have at the end of this? Starting with, of course, the final compensation philosophy and strategy. Secondly, an employee survey, a report will be delivered in, we anticipate, June or July. Market study reports are detailed findings of quantifying your market position for compensation, so how competitive are your pay scales and your pay policies for educators and staff. And then the recommendations delivered in October and November. And as we mentioned earlier, we anticipate coming back to you with a report of findings and some recommendations in that November-December timeframe. And that is the overview. Any thoughts, questions?
Ms. Woodhouse, should I just proceed to follow with, okay. Colleagues, comments, questions for either of these ladies? Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Weems, that was your hand, yes?
Thank you. I just had a question for clarification. I know it's been a while since we've had a full market, full compensation study. Did you say the last time we did it was 2005-2006?
Yes, ma'am. 2005-2006. And that particular study also included a review of our benefits as well.
Okay. And in this study, is it going to include benefits in looking at compensation or just the salaries?
This particular study will focus more on the salary scale, and the Benefits Executive Committee is also working closely with Mercer, our vendor, to look at the benefits side of things.
Okay. And if I could do one other quick one. So you mentioned the 2017 school year is when we finally were able to implement the recommendations from that previous study. I don't know how many times we've had these studies. Is it the norm? Was it concerns about where we could fit it in our budget, that it's a 12-year implementation to get to the recommendations? It feels like by the time we do that, are we already behind again?
Well, I think in this case, with the economy and in having some concerns economically, that that slowed down the implementation of the recommendations that were made. Typically, it does not take 12 years to implement when you prioritize the needs. And as Ms. Kazemi indicated, she will present to senior leadership first some recommendations, and then you have to really take into consideration what you're fiscally able to do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mrs. Weems.
I was also going to ask where the benefits piece would fall in. So if we had a comment about something with the benefits, I know they're working on that through Mercer, who do we send that to?
You can send that directly to myself. You can also send it to Crystal Pate. We both serve on that committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Anderson, and Mrs. Felton.
I'd like to know if, I mean, this is something that you might want to wait for before you answer, when we talk about our philosophy, but I wondered if it would take into account any incentives built within the steps scale for employees. It's something I've been interested in for quite a while, and I'd like to see somehow some incentives built into our steps for longevity.
Sure. Yeah, our intention is to look at both the salary scales themselves, as well as any incentives, supplements, stipends, anything that's on top of that base salary. Are there any particular types of incentives that you want to make sure we include?
Well, for quite some time, we've been, we've noticed that we have people who, teachers who quit at, say, stage nine, year nine, five years, nine years, that type. And so I'd like to see some type of an incentive to keep people within the workforce so that when we get to year 10, they're not saying, hey, I've been working for 10 years and I'm only making $1,000 more than I started, that type of thing.
That's exactly.
So some type of an incentive, whether it be a bonus at that year, I don't know. Just something that you all will be able to determine. And then maybe something at the 20-year level, you know, that type of thing. So our goal is to keep teachers 30 years.
Absolutely.
So that's what I would like to, I'd like to figure out some type of an incentive built within the steps that we could work on to keep people within our workforce and help them reach, get to 30 years.
Absolutely.
And before we get to, Mrs. Felton, if I could add, I mean, what Mrs. Anderson speaks to was one of the pieces of feedback from the last summer retreat. So we can assume that that will all be, you already have that, I understand, may not have looked through it all yet, but we spent quite a bit of time talking about these matters, including the two issues of compression and, I guess, milestone recognitions that Mrs. Anderson just raised. So like, we're not starting from scratch with all that, just want to be clear.
Correct, correct. Yes, yes. That's something we've already started to look at. I just wanted to make sure that what Ms. Anderson was saying was consistent with what I thought it was, and absolutely, we're on top of that.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Rye. This might be a part of your initial meetings, but I just want to make sure of equitable accessibility to all of our employees, especially those that are not normally sitting in front of a computer or having access to computers as well. So will this be paper access, paper surveys, or computers? It's going to be both? I just want to make sure that our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodial workers, all of those included in this. I know there will be, but I want to make sure that they have equal access to the information.
Yes, and actually, that's a great question, Ms. Felton. We definitely want to make sure that all of our employee groups are representative and that their voices are heard, and we recognize that always using technology is not the way to go. So we will also be having some small group meetings, invitations sent out to those groups who are less likely to access a survey, to again, make sure that their voices are heard. Yes. You're welcome. And also, if I may add, going back to what Ms. Rye had indicated, at the retreat, we definitely plan to pick up where you left off. You will receive the video link from the last meeting, that portion, so you can kind of review and catch yourselves up to speed, because what we don't want to do is insult anyone, waste your time by starting over. We'll pick up exactly from where we were with the goal of finalizing and putting to paper your philosophy statement.
Thank you for that. That's, appreciate that, thank you. Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Manning.
So I have just two items. One is, excuse me, certainly compensation is a topic all the time. And I guess one of my questions is, if compensation is a priority, why are we accelerating buildings by one year? That was the administrative recommendation, we're accelerating buildings by one year instead of using that for maybe one-time bonuses and hiring incentives. I mean, it seems like that would have been an excellent start.
So I'll talk, I'll talk about that because it's not directly related to the compensation study. So the, I think you're talking about the CIP. So we're talking about two different sets of money. So if you look at the, if you look in your CIP document, you look at the funding summary, the dollars that are set aside for CIP projects are dollars that can't be used in the operating budget for salaries. So there are things like city charter bond dollars. There's a different set of dollars that are used there that aren't part of the operating budget. So they're not, we couldn't reallocate those to compensation. One of the questions that was asked at City Council by Councilman Moss was, well, what about your reversion dollars? You could use your reversion dollars for that purpose. And as we kind of continue to try to explain, those reversion dollars are not guaranteed on an annual basis, so they, too, are one-time dollars. They're monies that we have when we true-up with the city at the end of the year that we give back to the city and then ask for this back, but they're not ongoing dollars.
No, I understand that would have been one-time, but bonuses and hiring incentives, actually, they could have been used for that.
They could have been used for bonuses and hiring incentives, and of course, we've done a lot with that with the ARP funds, because we've been allowed to do some of that with the ARP funds. In terms of ongoing compensation, in terms of like adding that to ongoing compensation, can't use those dollars for that.
Right, I understand. This is two different pieces of the same issue. I get that. All right. The other, only other question I had was, I know that a lot of teachers, when they first start teaching, are very concerned about liability insurance in case they were to be sued. What would be the cost of adding that as part of their compensation package? Is that something that we could, I'm sure you don't have a number off the top of your head, but is that something that we could look into? It's my understanding that it's very rarely used, so it probably wouldn't be.
I don't actually think they need it. They're covered.
I was going to ask, what type of, are you talking about over the limit of our policy that they might be personally responsible for? Because I don't think there's much exposure to them. The way we've structured our insurance with our excess liability, I don't think there's a circumstance where one of our employees would be in a situation where they had to cover. Now, if it's something that they do, which is like a criminal act, which if they hurt somebody deliberately, we would not cover that under our insurance, in which case they might be responsible for it. That would be the only time I would see that, and I'm not sure you would want to pay for something of that nature. But other than that, I'm not sure that you would want to, they need excess liability. We can look at that with your risk manager.
Okay, so based on what they already have, that's something that would be completely unnecessary?
I believe if they're in the course of their duties and doing what they're supposed to be doing, they should not need additional liability insurance.
Okay.
If they did something criminal, which is something you would not pay for, would not be covered by your insurance, they might then have to look at their own private insurance for that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off that, maybe we can make that clear to our employees, because I don't know if they're aware of that, because I hear teachers a lot saying that they need liability insurance. So if we can make sure that when we're putting that in the package, that they know that that's something that they already have, so, and that doesn't add to the cost. My question is something that we had discussed, and I want to make sure it's part of the review going forward, is pay based on performance and not just longevity. Is that kind of in there for you to look at?
That's certainly one of the policies, programs, or directions that is certainly in the mix for consideration.
Great.
We will be looking at to see how other school divisions reward and recognize something other than longevity, whether it's quality or performance or anything else, and then is on the table for discussion with you all in terms of options going forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, lots of good questions. Anybody else? All right, then we thank you, ladies, very much, and we look forward to seeing, you know, this process continue.
Thank you.
So we have Mr. Jack Freeman waiting in the wings, our Chief of Operations, and this is our PPA update, Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am. And Melissa Singer will be providing the update. Just want to, the intention behind this is a high-level kind of reminder of where we are in the process. We talked to you last summer when we received the initial one. No action today. It's to provide information, because there's going to be meetings that will happen likely in the June timeframe and then later on in the summer, and we want to keep you up to speed on where we are, get an opportunity to be able to ask any questions before we proceed into those meetings. So high-level information for today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Melissa Singer.
Hey, how are you all? Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Spence. I'm here today to spend some time with you to discuss our in-progress PPA process, or Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act process. Last time we had shared information with you on this was in January of this year, about three months ago. At that time, we had received responses for the PPA requests for conceptual phase proposals, the first part of this RFP process. We had also briefed you about five months before that, in August 2021, after receiving an unsolicited PPA proposal, which began this public PPA process we're discussing today. So what is a PPA project? You may recall from our last information sessions with you, the PPA process is an alternate method of delivering infrastructure projects than the traditional design, bid, build process we're accustomed to employing. The PPA process is governed by the Code of Virginia and has been in effect for over twenty years, since 2002. It allows the public body to create public-private partnerships through contractual agreements for a wide range of public projects. Certain efficiencies are able to be gained with this method by having the contractor involved in the beginning of the design process. For example, Norfolk delivered five of their newest schools recently through the employment of the PPA process. In response to the growth and use of the PPA process throughout the Commonwealth, the School Division also created its own policy setting forth guidelines for the PPA process in 2017, which is School Board Policy 3-71. Currently, we have three school replacement projects proposed in the Capital Improvement Program, recently approved by the Board and awaiting full budget approval from City Council. They are as follows. Princess Anne High School Replacement, CIP 1-015, with a budget of 162.65 million dollars. Williams Elementary, Bayside Sixth Replacement, CIP 1-028, with a budget of 68.3875 million dollars. And Bayside High School Replacement, CIP 1-029, with a budget of 197.7 million dollars. These three CIP projects total over 428 million dollars. Looking at the Princess Anne High School Replacement Project, the project is fully funded in fiscal year 25, or in roughly three years. We would be employing our regular RFP process for architectural services in the more traditional design bid build process in about a year. This project was first seen in the 2008-09 CIP, roughly fourteen years ago. Betty F. Williams Elementary, Bayside Sixth Grade Replacement Project, which, which would house grades four to six in the tri-campus elementary school zone and sixth grade of the Bayside Middle School Attendance Zone, would be fully funded in fiscal year 27, or in roughly five years. We will begin employing our regular RFP process for architectural services in the more conventional design bid build process in about three years. This project was first seen in the 2019-20 CIP. The third replacement school project in the current CIP, Bayside High School Replacement, has the majority of its funding sitting outside of the six-year capital window, roughly eighty-five percent of the total 197.7 million dollar budget, with funding beginning in fiscal year 26, or in roughly four years. The project was first seen in the 21-22 CIP. As we experienced with Princess Anne High School, it's important to note that the further out of the six-year window of the Capital Improvement Program, the more likely the construction date would continue to, could continue to be pushed back. It is also important to note that after Bayside High School Replacement Project, the next schools to begin construction would not be for over a decade. This is evidenced of our need to find greater funding and efficiencies in replacing our school buildings, particularly as those built in the years of quick growth continue to age. The Long Range Facility Master Plan, last updated in 2017 with public input, assessed and prioritized school replacements and details the relationship between funding and keeping up with reinvesting in our facility assets. Taking a look at the benefits of utilizing the PPA process as a method of delivering these three replacement projects, one large benefit is schools opening sooner. Roughly one year earlier for Princess Anne High School, three years earlier for Williams ES Bayside Sixth, and two years earlier for Bayside High School. This earlier opening of schools not only would benefit our students and their learning environments, but also means an earlier bid date for construction services, avoiding years of inflation costs for each project. The contractor and architectural engineering design team also helped to produce these cost savings, with the contractor being involved and having input from the beginning of the design process, creating efficiencies with both design and construction. With the cost per square foot of construction inflating 4.8 to 5.6% a year historically, coupled with the current volatility of the market in respect to inflation and the supply chain, through the PPA process, it is also important to note that the contractor will be taking on shared risks for close to a decade, with a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, negotiated when entering a comprehensive agreement. We'll see in the upcoming timelines that this comprehensive agreement could be entered into after the year of public input through work created during an interim agreement. Being involved in the beginning of the process and sharing the risk, while being contractually obligated to build quality buildings with criteria and expectations in terms of educational criteria, building performance, stormwater utilities, and other design expectations set forth through the PPA RFP process. The team is in it for the long haul, benefiting from gained efficiencies in deciding construction, a dual benefit to both parties of the, of the agreement, including the School Division. Another benefit of the PPA process would be the establishment of a prototype high school for the next several high school replacements, with several learning communities and ac- academy areas to be adapted to the next replacement high school specialties. By retaining ownership of documents, the prototype plan will speed up the design process for those next schools to utilize a prototype as a starting point of design. It is also important to discuss financial commitments. As with any CIP projects, debt appropriated for the CIP will be used for funding of the replacement schools. This process commits to funding beyond the six-year capital window, with funding not yet appropriated. A benefit to this process is that another sort of fi- source of financing is made available to leverage, which is the financing the private sector is able to secure for the public sector. In addition to use of public facility revenue bonds and use of reversion funds to act as funding sources for these replacement projects, private financing can also be made available. The ability to use this private financing would be laid out in a comprehensive agreement to be negotiated and entered into in the final negotiation phase of the PPA process, which would occur after the year-long public input during the interim agreement. Both School Board and City Council would have to approve the ability for this private financing to be used, if needed. So where have we been? In June 2021, we received an unsolicited proposal for these three replacement school projects. In August 2021, the School Board authorized the superintendent to, to accept the unsolicited proposal. Per the PPA guidelines, a public solicitation for competing bids was advertised in October 2021. PPA request for conceptual proposals, number 5083. In December 2021, we received two offers, one from SB Ballard Construction Company and one from Heartland Jordan JV, both of which were accepted by the RFP criteria. Per the PPA guidelines, the School Division then posted the PPA request for detailed phase proposals, number 5083, in February 2022, with both offers again submitting detailed phase proposals in March 2022. Most recently, in this month of April, the PPA Review Committee received presentations from both offerers. So what's next on the horizon? In order to keep the process moving, the target is to shortlist the preferred proposer this month, in April of 2022. After that, staff on the PPA Review Committee will begin negotiating and finalizing an interim agreement with the preferred proposer in May-June 2022. Then coming back to School Board for information in June-July of 2022. The draft of this interim agreement is currently posted publicly online, along with other components of the PPA process. We've discussed, per the PPA guidelines. The finalized interim agreement will also be posted online for thirty days prior to any action being taken by School Board or City Council. A public hearing will also be required thirty days prior to any action taken. The interim agreement would include deliverables to be received by the School Division and a cost estimate to be paid to the shortlisted provider for the roughly one-year public input process and designs, including schematics to fifteen percent design documents. Staff will then go back in front of the School Board to seek approval of the interim agreement with a target date of August 2022, and then to City Council. If approvals are granted for the interim agreement from September 2022 to spring 2023, that is the time that design will mature through stakeholder and public input process. The PPA Review Committee will review work performed under the interim agreement, should we enter into one, to ensure it's meeting the criteria set out through the process. And staff will negotiate a final comprehensive agreement for a final guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, after that. After finalizing a comprehensive agreement, approvals will again be sought from School Board in late spring 2023, and then City Council. Once those approvals are obtained, notice to proceed for construction service would be granted and begin. It's important to note that the time and money spent during the roughly one year of time that we might enter into the interim agreement, again, coming back to for information in June-July of 2022, would not be wasted. We would be undergoing a similar public input process in either deliverable method, the more conventional design bid build process or the PPA process. This public input period is vital to the success of the design components and ensuring they are meeting community needs, such as curriculum requirements and shared community assets, to name a few. If for whatever reason, the PPA process does get approval this year for the interim agreement phase, but does not get approval for the comprehensive agreement phase, design teams would be able to utilize the work and input created during the interim agreement phase rather than have to repeat that work and start from scratch, as the School Division will retain ownership of all documents. In closing, there are substantial benefits to continuing the PPA process. Staff's recommendation is to continue the PPA process to negotiate an interim agreement with the preferred proposer of the PPA request for conceptual and detailed proposals, number 5083, for the following schools: Princess Anne High School Replacement, Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth Replacement, and Bayside High School Replacement. Again, before entering into an interim agreement, we will come back to the School Board to provide information on what has been negotiated in June-July of 2022. The interim agreement will be posted online for thirty days prior to any action being taken. And a public hearing will also be held at least thirty days prior to any action being taken. School Board and City Council approvals will then be sought for the interim agreement with a target date of August 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Inger. Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Manning.
Thank you so much. Um, so I'm really surprised that we only received two offers. Why is that?
We had solicited, um, to the public and we received two offers. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, the marketplace is very volatile right now, um, but we have two very quality teams, SB Ballard Construction Company and, um, Jordan Heartland, who have teamed up. They've, they've all constructed buildings for us before and are, um, lo- local community, um, contractors.
Do we have any idea why others didn't submit a proposal?
I do not, ma'am, at this time. No, I don't.
I do, actually. If, if you want to say, if you want to address that person, if you don't, then I'll add to it.
All I want to share is, that's not appropriate for us to speculate as to why other contractors didn't submit proposals. We have two proposals. We're informing you where the process is, um, and that there are no commitments to the state, and we're going to come back to you with it. But I, I think it would be unfair for us to speculate as to why contractors didn't submit beyond the two that we have here.
Okay. Ms. Melnick, you know why?
Putting a project like this together in a short period of time is very difficult. And so the one company that came forward first did it, did the whole project and then presented it. And then an RFP went out and it was only, um, you know, a, a short amount of time. And to put that whole thing together and be competitive is, um, difficult. And so I'm glad one other company did step up, um, and, and put that together.
So it's based upon the design that was originally, essentially, that was originally presented to us? They were, the, the compet- competing offers were bidding on the basics of what was presented in the original offer?
So the, the general gist behind that, and I'll, I'll let you provide more detail if needed, but we had a PPA. So with that PPA was three schools, and the four, when you include, uh, Bayside Sixth in it. And it was those three projects, and so that was the structure of the, of the project. So they had a proposal. So the way that the system is designed is to not just block into one, you have to open that up for others to be able to, to be able to compete and to be able to put their input. So with that basic structure of, hey, this is the PPA that we received, it gave others an opportunity to be able to, um, make a similar proposal to that.
So is, is architectural design included in, uh, kind of what they're bidding on? So is that based upon the origin, the original PPA? Or can someone submit, hey, I've got a completely different idea? And I want to construct a school that looks like this, not like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you could see from the timeline, there were two sets of the RFP process. So the first was for conceptual proposals. Now, we did submit, um, is, receive that unsolicited bid, but at that period of time, it was up to the proposing team to decide what concept plans they wanted to submit. They could have completely changed what was in the unsolicited proposal and offered new concept designs, um, on, on both teams. So first, it was a conceptual design, just for kind of the layout of the buildings, um, understanding learning spaces needed, site things needed, things like that. We then went back after accepting those, that they were in accordance with the RFP for the detailed phase proposals. And that gave a little bit more information in terms of, um, components of the building, building systems that they were looking at in order for utility savings, which we normally employ, and other testing such as financing offers and things like that. So we have now gone through conceptual phase proposals being received, and then detailed phase proposals being received. And, um, from those two proposals, it is the time in the process to choose, to shortlist one of the two for an interim agreement where these proprietary documents that they are submitting as part of these proposals can then be o- opened up to the public for the shortlister, and then engage the public in dialogue about what these schools should look like, what the school should offer. So no design is finalized at all right now. I think, um, they have great ideas, both teams. However, it's really going to be up to the public input process to, um, characterize and finalize those designs. And we, so we would look for schematic designs as deliverables, and then also fifteen percent design and engineering documents. And, um, there is a cost associated again to this interim agreement. However, we will be able to maintain, um, receipt of these deliverables up to when we are, we would start the process again if we were not to stay in the PPA method of delivering these three projects.
Okay. And because I noticed in September 2022, it says "design matures," which seems to indicate design's already taking place. So I just want to know, I want to make sure that the public has plenty of input on the design of this. And we're not going to get to September and tell the public, mm, well, we've already done this, we can't go back. So just want to clarify that, um, the public and the Board will have, um, plenty of input on what's included in these schools and what's not.
Absolutely. The, the shortlist preferred proposer will be giving us a schedule um, of what they anticipate for design shreds for all three replacement schools, and, um, walking through that whole process, the contractor team, the architecture and the engineering team, all together, walking through that process. And that's really one of the benefits of the PPA, is that, um, we're not doing design without the contractor involved. So the contractor might, might see some efficiencies to be gained, and vice versa, too. The contractor might have some ideas, and the A and E team that works with them might be able to say, you know what, if we do it this other way, we might save a little bit more money.
So when and how will the public be involved?
So we will come back to you again in June-July 2022 with a draft interim agreement, that's for the one-year period. We then would come back again after posting things for thirty days so that the public can see what's in this interim agreement and, and provide comment. Uh, we then would be coming back to both School Board and City Council in August of 2022 to see if we want to enter into that interim agreement. And then from then on, the clock starts for that year-long process, from September 2022 to spring 2023. And that's when their, I, their thoughts of design would then mature with that public input. And, and also stakeholder input from schools and the greater community.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Manning, I participated as a citizen in the Norfolk one, and they do have, and, you, each school that went to, there were hundreds of people involved, and they really did do a lot of redesigning at that point. So I know as a citizen that, that is, that's your time period to do it, and there was a lot of redesign done based. So I know as a citizen that that is, that's your time period to do it, and there was a lot of redesign done based. What they came in originally was all, some of these schools, the elementary schools, would all be the same, and they significantly changed certain elementary schools based on what that community was looking at. So I know that that's a normal part of the process. I've seen that done with these projects before. So you will have that opportunity in the following year, starting in September.
Yeah, I wasn't intimately involved in the last project that we did, but I know that, you know, the public was involved. And one thing that I did notice, that I don't think was included, that I would like to see included in that process, is if, if someone says, well, I would like to see this and this in the school, no costs are given. So, you know, if I say, you know, I want a waterfall in the school, um, well, that's great, but how much is that waterfall gonna cost? We need to know, um, I, I would like to see costs given when people give ideas as well, so that we can kind of keep, keep those costs in check.
Yeah, and, and, um, absolutely, and that's one of the benefits as well. This guaranteed maximum price, or this GMP, is, it is, um, defined during the interim agreement as the public input process, um, continues through that one year. And again, it's the same process, the same type of design shreds, same number of design shreds, same type of schematics we're expecting during that year process, that we would expect during the design, bid, build process. We're just trying to package them again to, in order to, um, retain some efficiencies with that. And, um, tho- that GMP will again be reiterated in the comprehensive agreement, which would also have action acted on it. So what, they would first say, okay, with our concept, we think we could do it for X during the interim agreement. As we go through that public input process, there of course will be push and pull with what needs to be in the building and what doesn't need to be, or on-site. And then we will again during the, uh, when we get to see the comprehensive agreement in late spring 2023, we will again see a, a guaranteed maximum price come out.
Anybody else, ladies? Well, before we say our final thanks, uh, just to reiterate, we're in April now. So can we just recap what the, the next step is?
So the next step is, um, we have our procurement agent here, uh, Mr. Santalup, and he will be offering, um, to the shortlist proposer, that the Design Review Committee, that the PPA Review Committee has chosen, the beginning to negotiate an interim agreement. We'll spend the next month to two months negotiating that with the proposer, and then bring that back to you all in June or July of 2022. And then, um, have it posted online, and, uh, look to receive public comments on that prior to any action being taken.
So thank you. You're recapping the first three steps here, the what's next. So I just wanted to end there, but we do have a, another colleague, Mrs. Anderson.
So who is on that committee that chooses, you're, so you're choosing one of the two?
Yes, ma'am.
So who's on that committee?
So we have, um, a representative from, from Budget, the Director, um, Dan Hopkins. We have, uh, Mr. Santalup is our procurement agent, and they're here with me today. Myself from Facility Services, Don Ballman, our staff architect, Ryan Hershey, who are as a mechanical systems engineer, and Tim Cole, our sustainability officer, and Mr. Matt Delaney, um, are represented, are representative from DOSL.
Okay. Okay.
Are there no board members on that committee?
No, ma'am.
Never has been?
No, ma'am.
In the past?
No, not as part of the process.
Why is that?
Uh, well, it's our first PPA process, and I believe it was outlined to be staffed by staff.
Okay.
Um, a lot of the information that is gone into the conceptual and detailed proposals is proprietary information. So, um, as with a lot of negotiations that we see.
But it, it's a multifaceted approach, correct? It's not just one, one piece of that. It might not just be cost, it might be, it might be a whole host of other things.
Yes, for the review committee. We have our procurement side, we have our budget side, we have our curriculum side, and then we have our facility side, all going in to review these proposals.
Okay, and the plans are not so, the, I just, I just, I'm, I know I understand this, but I want to make sure that everyone else understands. The detailed plans are not there, correct? Like, a subcontractor can't come in and, and do a takeoff and bid a job based on what you have right now?
No, ma'am. There's no construction drawings at all. They're more in schematic format. There's no specifications to say the material shall be X or Y. Now, of course, for them to come up with a guaranteed maximum price, um, during the con- conceptual and detailed proposal phases, they have, of course, began this work and have ideas for it, and those ideals will be set forth in, in front of the public for them to comment on and to give feedback on, and to make their own suggestions with as well, for that year period during the interim agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And I would encourage my colleagues after tonight's meeting to review the, the School Board policy governing this, and if that generates any further questions, to, we can have them reach out to you, Ms. Ingram. And, and Mr. Freeman, is that your wish? Email both of you?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I don't want to put Mrs. Lanetti on the spot, but, um, I'll just ask what you want.
We cannot. I have outside counsel coming in. I told them not to come till after seven, so they won't be here till then.
Okay, I thought it was worth a shot to see if we could fit in a close now. But, um, we will just have an, an elongated dinner break, so. That, that, and we need them for both?
Yes, they've got, they're handling both of them. They'd like to speak to you.
Okay. All right, so then, um, we will reconvene in here for formal meeting at six o'clock, and this workshop is adjourned.